Good evening. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting of the Forover School Committee for Monday, December 9th, 2019. Madam Secretary, would you please call the floor?
Mr. Agia?
Here.
Mr. Kugan?
Here.
Mr. Costa?
Here.
Mr. Hetzel?
Here.
Mr. Corey?
Here.
Mr. Martins?
Here.
I'd like to ask everyone in attendance to please join us in a salute to our flag.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 20E, pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting or may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. First item is citizens' input. I don't have anybody who has signed up this evening. Has anybody that intended on signing up didn't have the opportunity? Moving on to recognitions, we have several of those this evening. I'd ask my colleagues to join us here at the podium so we can make those presentations.
I do want to put a plug in for the recognition awards that we do give out at each meeting. We do appreciate the work that our students, our families, our parents, all the hard work that's been done in the Forover Schools. So, if you'd like to nominate someone, please get us the information to the secretary at the Administration Building so that we can recognize all the great work that's being done. So, for tonight, for the first award, I'm going to call upon Dr. Malone and then Vice Chair Costa. So, Dr. Malone.
So, we're here tonight... Thank you.[168.23][168.23](Laughter) I like you guys. That's why we're giving you awards.[172.26][172.26](Laughter) We're here tonight to honor one of our amazing students, and we apologize that we did not provide this award and honor at the last school committee meeting. So, young Mr. Rose, Kyle Rose, scored a perfect score on the MCAS, a perfect score on the 5th grade MCAS. Tonight, we honor him and his family for the great work to show the world how smart the kids are in the city of Fall River. So, with that, I want to thank him for his due diligence, his effort, his esprit de corps, and most importantly, the hard work that he brings in every single day, a role model to the rest of the school system.
Let's get another round of applause. Perfect score on an MCAS.[281.52][281.52](Applause) Good job. Tonight, on behalf of my colleagues on the school committee, we also have the honor and privilege, excuse me, of recognizing seven outstanding civic-minded youth in our city. Very proud of each one of them. I know my colleagues are as well. Their bravery and courage, the fact that they were dialed into the process when it came to the city's election speaks to, I'm sure, their success going forward in the future. And I didn't want to miss the opportunity to recognize that because it's very important that our youth get dialed in at an early age. And when you talk about being plugged in, these seven clearly are plugged in and certainly know where they're going, and they're heading in a great direction. So, I'm going to call each of you up. If you're here, please join me and my colleagues here, and then I'll read actually each of the citations, okay? And I apologize in advance if I botch anybody's name. So, the first one is Solei Gussip.[355.71][355.71](Applause) Did I say that correctly? Solei. Solei, I apologize. If you can just join us up here. Jelaine Palacio?[373.02][373.02](Applause) Is it Jalen? Jelani. Jelani. I'm sorry, Jelani. I apologize in advance.
Thank you.
Oh, for two.[386.49][386.49](Laughter) That's it. This is correct. I got this one, I think. Haley Paradise?[393.43][393.43](Applause) One for two. And baseball and batting 500. Actually, one for three, 333, so I'm still struggling. Jahid Workman?
Not here.
Not here? We'll make sure we get Jahid his. Summer Slater?[434.34][434.34](Applause) Congratulations, thank you. And Ms. Dorothy Barrows.[448.02][448.02](Applause) I think Dorothy's here. We'll make sure we get Dorothy hers. So, the recognition is a school committee special recognition dated December 9th, 2019, has each of their names on it. It says, "In recognition of your participation in the October 28th, 2019 Youth and Candidate Forum Night, for sharing your vision and hopes for the future of our community and for serving as a positive role model for all the youth of Fall River." So, that's inscribed on each one of these certificates, and I couldn't be more proud tonight with my colleagues to present all of them with a certificate. Congratulations. We look forward to seeing you in the near future and keep doing all that you do for Fall River.
The final award we have tonight is one that many of you are going to feel sad about, and that's the last service of one of our own school committee members, school committee member, Mr. Joseph Martins. Joe's been a member of the school committee for many, many years. In fact, he's a legend in the Mass Association of School Committees for his service. He is a former superintendent of Greater Fall River Vocational School, otherwise known as Diamond. Within his wealth of knowledge across a career through good times and bad, Joe's been a loyal stalwart to the children of the city of Fall River. He's been a mentor and friend to many of those of us sitting in the room, and he's been somebody who I've got to know over the last four years. Joe can be tough, but he's driven, he's demanding, and he's fair. And what better things in life do you want from someone than those core values? So, as superintendent, you hate when you're a member of your team, you know, your school committee's a team, a member of your team decides that they're going to step down. But that length of service that you've provided here in Fall River has made us a better school system. We know, no matter if you're on the school committee or not, you're going to be holding us accountable. And that accountability that you bring to the table is something that I personally relish, and I know it makes us better. And I can tell you that I appreciate the, sometimes emails I get on Saturdays, either early in the morning or late in the afternoon, with just a couple of kind words about focusing on family, making sure I show up at things in my own life, that I don't put too much time into doing this job, that I forget the real things that are important in life. And I've always appreciated Joe's kindness and those things. As I'm a newbie here and a newcomer in this city, I've only been here three and a half years. I'm going to turn this over to our school committee vice chair, Mr. Costa, for some more august remarks.
So, tonight is sort of bittersweet. I've had the honor and the privilege of serving with Mr. Martins for his entire 11 years. And so, whether he has taken you to task publicly or privately, just know, having had conversations with Mr. Martins over the years, he's done that from a place where children come first. He truly cares about this district and not just the students here in Fall River, but students in general. As a matter of fact, his testament to the years of service can speak to that, whether it was in vocational education or here in the Forover Public Schools and public education. Joe has always come from a place where students come first. And so, tonight, on behalf of the entire school committee, we do want to recognize Mr. Martins for his years of service, for his commitment towards Chapter 74 programs here. Joe has been a very vocal, in some cases, a pioneer for the expansion of Chapter 74 programs here in the Forover Public Schools. He's always been a staunch supporter of special education in our district, and he's always advocated for additional pairs in the class to make sure there were enough adults in the room to provide a safe learning environment for all of our students here. So, Joe, we appreciate your years of service. Before we resume this evening's agenda, I did want to turn the floor over to Mr. Martins if he'd like to say a few words, and then we'll resume with the order of business. Mr. Martins, the floor is yours.
Thank you very much. I certainly appreciate the honor and the award. So, my colleagues on the committee, thank you, or the public out there, thank you for electing me as a member of the school committee. If I count the 10 years on the school committee as part of my educational experience, that means 33 years at Diamond, five years as the director of the Newport Technical Center, one year in Providence, Rhode Island, and then 10 years here. So, if you add all that, it's somewhere around 49 years. It was time to pass the torch to someone else in hopes that we'll continue. I think the school committee knows right well what direction that I would like to see them go, and I'll watch it very carefully as the time goes on. And don't be surprised if I send you an email saying, "Hey, what are you doing?" Nevertheless, thank you very much, and thank you, the general public.[952.13][952.13](Applause)
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Next order of business is the superintendent's report. Turn it over to Dr. Malone.
Sure. Thank you. I have two items to discuss tonight. The first is to report to the committee the update on the Durfee construction. It says district construction, so let me just start with Durfee, and then I'll say a couple more things about Tansy and Watson. At Durfee, as you can see, the structural steel, including the superstructure of the bell tower, is up and will be completed by December 13th, so that's this week. And then detailing of the steel, tying in, welding, that will last another two weeks. Work is continuing on the utilities into the courtyard, and will continue to the end of this week. And the quantity of work is decreasing outside as we are doing the temporary heating so to the ability to work within. If you can see, the building's been wrapped in fabric and plastic. The focus right now in the building is the fieldhouse lobby is being concentrated on in terms of plumbing and electrical, along with the superstructure that has been erected and the new exterior walls and the sheathing has been put up. Rough plumbing has been put in place in both the pool area and the fieldhouse, as well as the electrical. And we're going to continue with the water and gas work in the trenches that you can see sometimes dug out around the perimeter of the facility. The big push right now is to get ready for the winter conditions, mainly so that the building can be tight, so that workers can work inside, and the temperatures will be appropriate, and that's what the heaters are for. You know, the last couple of weeks, the weather's been pretty challenging. Right now, the project's averaging about 85 workers per day on site, so we can get a sense of how big that scope is. We expect that to increase over the winter into the summer as we get more craftsmen then working on the inside of the building. The PACE Center work is completed, so that's the new parent information, the Family Welcome Center, and we're finalizing our punch list items. The furniture has been delivered and assembled, all the technology has been installed, and folks are working up in that site now at the Nagel Auditorium. We have turned over the occupancy of the former PACE to Suffolk Construction as of the Thanksgiving week. We moved over the break. We're up and operational. We expect to have a grand opening, if you will, that we'll, of course, invite members of the school committee and other members of the city to see the great work that was done to help us and get the PACE Center established. Concurrent with that, you can see we're winding down the work at Tansy. So, roof, windows, ADA compliance, boilers, the brick pointing, all that will be concluded shortly, and then we'll be moving over to Watson. Ken met with the Watson team last week, spoke to teachers and others to, everyone gets a real sense of how that will roll out, and that project will commence spring into summer, and then that will be a whole year-long project. Other work that we're continuing to do, of course, is continuing our own internal upgrades at Talbot School and finishing the new main entrance in the Rock Street facility. So, Ken and his team, I really want to say thank you publicly for their great work, all hands on deck, really doing a great job, and because of that, I think we're making a lot of progress around the facilities of the system. Great work on the snow day last week, getting the maintenance teams, getting the schools cleaned up and ready for school next week. It is that time of year, so we're going to have snow. We've got some rolling in this week, and our teams will continue to do what they have to do with the city to ensure that our parking areas, our walkways are clean, and schools are in the best possible shape possible. One of the great things that came out of the last couple of months of school committee work, some of the additional funds that we had, was the concept of creating a competitive mini-grant process for school sites to apply for. The school committee budgeted about, well, budgeted $200,000 to award to schools who write an RFP, a competitive process, around ways that they can close achievement gaps and meet their school improvement plan. So, as of today, today was the deadline. As of earlier today, we had 13 of 16 schools submitted a proposal. Amounts requested are anywhere from $4,000 to upwards of $40,000, depending on the scope of the projects. Here are some of the ideas. The tutoring services, after-school programming, professional development for parent professionals, professional development for ESL and special education, teachers, parent activities, leveled readers, which is a way to get at closing gaps around reading recovery and reading development, and then more work in the universal design for learning, so how we look at classes and schools as full differentiated models, and then looking at a way that we can pay folks to do some observations and collaboration outside of the school day for teachers. So, really exciting things that are new and innovative. Right now, the requests are above what we have and the funding available, but we're going to be working with those schools to scale down to get to a point of around $200,000. If it's a little bit slightly above, I'll let the committee know. We don't want to stymie any innovation. We have some additional funds. Our team, we have a review team. It's made up of administrators, FREA teachers, some FRA people. They're going to be meeting this week to go over the proposals, and then we're going to select how we award, and I'll keep the committee informed. We'll hopefully have this done before the Christmas holiday. But this is exciting, and again, an example of school committee members' idea that we brought forward, and the committee agreed, a good idea. So, I want to thank particularly school committee vice chair Mark Costa. This is outstanding, and I look forward to actually in next year's budget, bringing something like this forward to sustain for year two. So, with that, I'm done.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. Next item is the student comment and delegation, student delegate report. Neither of the students are present this evening, so move on to the approval of the minutes for November 18th, 2019, for the regular meeting of the Forover School Committee, Finance Subcommittee, and the 1119 Special Education Alternative Subcommittee. Is there a motion to approve the minutes? So moved. Made by Mr. Hetzler. Is there a second to that motion? Made by Mr. Kugan. Any questions, comments? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. There's a request this evening for travel. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to.
Made by Mr. Corey. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Any discussion? Hearing none? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. There are donations listed this evening. Is there a motion to accept all donations?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzler, seconded by Mr. Corey. Any discussion on the donations? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. For the record, Mr. Superintendent?
Sure. From Bay Coast Bank to the Special Education Department, $800. From Bay Coast Bank to Residency Prep Academy, $240. From Donors Choose to Durfee High School, one Urban Shop faux fur saucier chair, one pavilion flannel fleece throw blanket, two collections of tufted padded boosted cushions.
Say that fast five times.
Nope. And one twinkle star string of lights, all for a classroom project. We want to thank our philanthropic supporters for their generous support of our schools and students.
Thank you, Dr. Malone. There are contracts before the committee this evening. Has any member wished to put any holds on a contract for more in-depth discussion? Is there a motion to approve contracts as listed? Mr. Kugan makes the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hetzler. Any discussion on those contracts? Hearing unroll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Kugan?
Yes.
Mr. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martins?
Yes.
Next is listed is the grants. Is there a motion to approve grants as listed?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzler. Is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Kugan. Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Agia? And then Mr. Corey.
If we could just get a, it looks like most of the money's on stipends. If we could just get a description of what that looks like?
Certainly, we have our assistant superintendent, Ann Dogg, making her way. Dr. Dogg, welcome. Good evening.
You're absolutely correct. The majority of the funds would go toward stipends. The purpose of this grant is for us to create a system where our school adjustment counselors, our student support coordinators have some dedicated time to do their jobs. We want to build a structure where we come together with our community partners to not only improve our current services, but to build new services in our ever-changing needs. So, by bringing these folks together in an after-hours capacity, we'd be able to service more students, as well as families, who may have limited insurance or not have health insurance entirely. We'd also be preparing some community cultural events, which we know are an essential part of our community building. This is actually a continuation grant. The total of the grant was $110,000. We had $15,000 at the end of last school year, and this is really an action planning grant. We want to look at a universal screener, just as we do academically, for reading, math, writing, et cetera. We would universally screen our youngsters in the behavioral/mental health field, so it's bringing people together in an after-school capacity to put a plan in place.
So, when I see the title of, obviously, I haven't seen the detail of what went into it, but improving student access to behavioral and mental health services, I'm reminded of discussions that this committee's had, and some of it was had at debates when we were all running for school committee about the need for mental health services and the lack of psychiatrists available for students, and how can we get those services in place? Some people mentioned, myself included, putting somebody on retainer, trying to get somebody locked in, looking at mental health centers, community health centers inside the school. When I see the title, my first reaction is, what are we doing with that? And could we use some of these funds for such a thing?
That's exactly what the purpose of this grant is, yes. So, it's bringing our community partners, child and family, together so that we can strategize on how to better service our kids' needs. It's also, our school adjustment counselors have such a full day that they're not able to do their jobs in the seven hours that's allotted to them. And so, a lot of the paperwork has to be had, as well as making sure that kids are seen with their families and support is provided. So, it's an action planning grant to be able to sustain our partnerships, but make sure kids get the care that they need immediately. So, that's exactly what this grant is for.
So, I guess I'm asking is if it's listed on the stipend, $66,500, and through some basic conversations, it came out that we needed $30,000 of that to put psychiatrists on retainer or whatever we could do to, could we do that?
Yeah, the way the grant was written, though, specifically, so if I look at the 66,5, it's for 18 staff, Saks and administrators, as well as some community facilitators. So, a psychiatrist, probably not, but in providing access to good quality care and referrals to psychiatrists and finding a way to retain health care for some of our youngsters who have no insurance, yes, that's what this grant would be able to provide.
So, what are you going to read in 18 people? I don't see that in any of the documentation that we have, so that's news to me, but what I would ask is that, it sounds like as if it's worth looking into, but there's no, you can bring together 100 people. Everybody's going to know that one of the biggest issues right now is the fact of there's not doctors to take care of some of these kids, and they're not getting the actual treatment. We don't need to, in my view, we don't need to get everybody together to plan- need to, in my view, we don't need to get everybody together to plan. We know this is an issue. So when you say this is exactly what this is gonna do, it sounds to me like this is gonna be, let's talk about it a little more, let's come up with an action plan, but I'd rather implement.
This is being implemented. This is a committee that is looking at the needs of all 16 of our schools in order to provide their services in an after-school capacity for them.
But you just told me that it's not for services. You said it's for our adults to plan.
And some of it is servicing our youngsters, though. If there need to meet with a parent and a student, instead of taking the youngster out of an academic class, they would meet in an after-school capacity. It's not for medical examinations or medical care. It would be our school adjustment counselors, as well as our partners, providing the services for our students.
I understand. I just respectfully disagree that that's the most important piece of using the funds. We need to get these kids serviced. We don't need to plan anymore. We don't need to talk anymore. We need to implement it. So I just respectfully disagree. But the last question is, you mentioned that the adjustment counselors are busy all day.
Correct.
Are the adjustment counselors still doing lunch duty in Fall River?
Some of them are, yes.
I think if you're really looking at it, if that's an issue why they can't do some of these things, we need to stop that practice. We're paying adjustment counselors, and I've said it for years, that to do two hours of lunch duty per day, and they're supposed to be servicing kids' mental health needs during the day, it doesn't make sense. It just, quite frankly, doesn't make sense to have qualified people having to do lunch duty all day. So that's something that I think can be changed administratively. I'd ask you to look at that, and I do just wanna stress that we have to do something about getting a person on retainer or some other way to get these children serviced, and whatever you can do to help, I'd appreciate it. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I'm gonna follow up. Thank you, Dr. Dargan. I'm very encouraged by the overall direction moving forward and to address the needs especially of our school adjustment counselors. It's absolutely imperative that we look at it. I think you're doing a great job. I just want to know, what's the $10,000 line that stipulates other? What's that mean?
So the $10,000 was for last school year. Again, we started this grant probably May and June of last year. We sent several of our staff to a national SEL conference, and they were able to come back with some information, such as piloting some good universal screeners. So that was from last year.
To follow up on my colleague's comments about the school adjustment counselors having to deal with lunch and recess, I was really hoping that moving forward into the future, we could also work hard to address that. So that, I don't, I almost don't mind if they check in with lunch and recess, because a lot of clinical issues surface at that time of day when the kids are in that social setting. And it's good for the counselors to know what's going on there socially. However, I know that so many of, so many of them have told me, boy, we're just getting swamped with recess duty and lunch duties. I really wish that if we could look at future grants to hire maybe, even if we could hire like Paris to help with lunch or recess. I don't know what that looks like, but just to take the onus off of the school adjustment counselors, I concur with my colleague. I think that's a direction that we should be looking forward to in the future. With that, I yield. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Any further discussion? I would just say this, Dr. Dargan, that I agree with Mr. Agia. I know that a number of us were looking for additional mental health services and have been sort of beating that drum. What I will say is that, my understanding is that the New Bedford school system received a good sum of money in last year's state budget. I mentioned this before. I had a conversation with State Senator Michael Rogics, who asked why Fall River wasn't getting on board with funding that'll be used, I guess, in New Bedford for a community health center inside the school district, inside the school, so that students have access to mental health services in their schools. I can't agree more with Mr. Agia, 'cause I see it in my own profession. When we make referrals for mental health services to psychiatrists, the waitlist is just way too long. And so we know we have needs here in our district. Making referrals or planning or having these professionals meet to talk about how these referrals we made, that's great. But once that referral's made, the wait time is far too long. And so what ends up happening, like it does with adults, it happens with students. They wait, and they wait, and eventually they become hopeless, or they decide, you know what, not gonna seek that service out. And so I would ask you to reach out to your counterpart in New Bedford, ask them about their community mental health clinic or center that they're bringing, and maybe that's something that we can advocate with our delegation here for going forward. Because if those funds are gonna be made available, we certainly can prove there's a need here. And I agree, I think we should be bringing these services to the extent we can in-house, so that when a student is experiencing mental health issues, we don't have to worry about the referral and whether or not that student gets there and gets the help that they need. So I'd ask if you, through Superintendent, if you could take a look at that and come back to the committee at a later date with maybe some information. Dr. Malone?
Just on this topic, I agree with the sentiment of the committee. We're gonna talk about the budget priorities for next year in a little bit, and one of them is around the SEL. One of the things I'm trying to figure out how to do, Mr. Agia, is how do we fund our own psycholog, psychiatrist? Whether that's through contracted services or hire an actual employee higher. But it's something that I think we all agree to have on staff and then help to coordinate a lot of those things. So that, I guess what I'm trying to say is, your insight, your suggestions is not going unnoticed on that regard. The purpose, this money could be used for that, but I hope I'm able to do it through Chapter 70 money that you approve later this year.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion? Motion's been made. Roll call.
Mr. Agia?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hetzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Corrigan.
First item of discussion is a vote to approve the approval of two special education job descriptions, a cluster coordinator and a board-certified behavioral analyst, as referred by the Special Ed Alternative Subcommittee, presented by Assistant Superintendent for Special Education, Mr. Loesch. Welcome, Mr. Loesch. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Agia. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Any discussion on that motion?
Yes.
Mr. Corey, and then Mr. Agia.
Hi, Dr. Loesch. How are you? I wanna support this, but I wanna support it with the understanding from the administration that these new positions are carefully vetted. We're in the driver's seat right now. We can pick the very best in the pool, and that's what we're looking for. The qualities I'm looking for in a new candidate are candidates who bring respect and motivation to those they're working around in all the different groups, whether it be the administrative teams, or the school-based teams, or the office teams, whatever they are. I want them to come and bring a real high morale, high motivation, high respect. So I'm in a position to support, but I did have one technical question. On the job descriptions and the responsibilities, it says conducting FBAs and development of behavior intervention plans. So does this remove the responsibility from the SACS?
No, not necessarily. I think we have a high level of need throughout the district for FBAs and BIPs for our students. I think it would lighten the load, certainly, 'cause I think it's gonna, it's gonna bring that portion to the sub-separate programs. Right now, though, when we look at the breakdown of FBAs and behavior intervention plans, most of the ones that are being conducted in the sub-separate classrooms are done by our school psychologists and BCBA's, or our autism specialists. So they're already being done in that capacity. Right now, in terms of those, though, I would say our psychologists are overloaded.
Yeah, thanks. I know that in the past, it's been a thorny issue. It's not that we don't wanna, it's not that the SACS don't wanna do the FBAs. It just gets in the way of their boots-on-the-ground action on a day-to-day, on the school day, whatever's happening on campus each day. And so I was just trying to lighten the load for the SACS and maybe wondering if this job description might be able to help that a little bit.
Yep. I think it'll definitely have an impact on it. I think in addition, we need to look, and we're already exploring this right now, to providing them more training, and how in a more effective way to conduct an FBA and write a BSP, that it's not taking as much time as it previously did.
And when candidates are chosen, they will be made aware to this body as well. Is that correct?
Yeah, it would go through normal procedures.
Okay, thank you. I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. And Mr. Agia?
So yeah, just had a few comments. You did make this presentation to the Subcommittee, and it got passed forward here unanimously. I think this is something that's very important. One question that I would have, it's probably not a question, but a comment. So when we describe the position of cluster coordinator reporting to the principal and the Office of Special Education and serving on the principal's administrative team, can you talk about what that would look like? Well, I think really the purpose of that is to really have clear communication between both bodies. That, you know, special education has an awareness of what's going on in the program on a regular basis, that they're also participating in collaboration meetings among all cluster coordinators, which is part of the future plan of it, and that there's some dual accountability on both ends to make sure that this person's being supported both at the school level and at the central level. We wanna make sure that this person is set up to grow our program's capacities, and we wanna make sure it has as much support as possible. So when I look at it saying serve on the principal's administrative team, I see this, in the narrative, it talks about where there's a lot of needs and a pretty good amount of students in the program at a given school. So if a school has, what have a whole strand of students that have fallen to this category, by me reading this, I'm thinking that that person who's working on a day-to-day basis is almost like a, an administrative person for that particular group. And I can speak from experience. When I worked in a school here in the city like that, it was difficult because the person was the vice principal of the school and then also the program. So decisions need to be made, and also, that person is probably gonna know what's happening in those classrooms a lot better than a vice principal who has other duties or the principal. So would they be doing evaluations for the people within there, or can they work with the, like, I wouldn't wanna create another administrative position that's gonna have the knowledge of what's happening in a given program and have that person not be able to assist the principal and the leadership team in doing the evaluations. Does that make sense? It does make sense. I think when we initially developed these and thinking about the evaluation process, due to the large amount of responsibility that's gonna be already under the position, we didn't look necessarily at the evaluation piece for teachers solely because we also wanted to be at a diverse candidate pool of social workers, BCBA's, former classroom teachers, and some of them wouldn't have that direct knowledge. However, we did want them to have the capacity to evaluate paraprofessionals. That's an area in the district that's currently not done at full capacity on a regular basis as well.
That's good.
So that's a part, that's a portion of our staff population, which we haven't grown and done a good job with so far, which this would be another piece to really make sure that these people are moving forward and best serving our students at the highest level possible. I don't disagree with, I mean, I'm not sure that we have a robust paraprofessional evaluation tool at the present time. Agreed. So in essence, it's in there, but it's not in there.
We agree.
So my point is, is I see here, serve as primary evaluator for paraprofessionals, you still have work to do on the negotiation side to get that done. Yep. What I would recommend is that somewhere in these responsibilities, that we at least allow for the person to be able to assist in evaluations. So maybe even just changing that word to serve on the evaluation team, so that if the person happened to have the proper certifications and it was legal to do, but they're in the, it really wouldn't make sense to have the person in the, in the day-to-day, if I'm working day-to-day and I see the great work that somebody's doing in a program, but I'm not their evaluator, but somebody else who doesn't see that is their actual evaluator. You get what I'm saying? Yep. I think by maybe getting rid of the word, serve as primary evaluator for paraprofessionals, and just changing that to serve on the evaluation team, might allow us to do that. Or any suggestions that you, or the Superintendent would wanna make? I think that, I refer to the Superintendent.
Dr. Malone, to answer the?
Yes, I think a compromise here would be something around, serve on the school sites' evaluation team and as the primary evaluator for paraprofessionals.
Make that in the form of an amendment?
If there's any other ability, 'cause you're right. I think Mr. Loesch really hit the nail on the head. When we're looking at a diversity of candidate pool from different experiences, some may come with that training, where others may not. We don't wanna preclude it, but we're not making it a mandatory fact. But I think that would accomplish that, and we can write that in this job description.
So Mr. Agia makes that in the form of an amended amendment to the motion that's on the table. Is there a second to that amendment?
Second.
Made by Mr. Corey. Mr. Agia, force still yours.
I yield.
Thank you. Mr. Corey?
All set.
Mr. Coogan?
I don't understand why number 15 is covered. Additional duties is assigned by the Office of Special Ed.
Because it's about the school site, Mr. Coogan. What he's referring to is the school site employees. Because remember, the folks that are evaluated are under the principal's auspices, not the central office auspices.
Right. The principal controls every building.
Correct.
So why does that have to be?
It doesn't.
That's what I'm saying.
But you say, does 15 cover the ability?
No, I'm saying that if Michael Loesch tells one of the cluster people he wants to know what's going on in Mr. Coogan's room, and give him the evaluation, that's allowed right now.
What are you saying? It doesn't say the principal?
The principal, the actual reports to it. I'm saying this, the principal controls everybody in the building.
But the duty, it doesn't say additional duties as assigned by the principal or the Office of Special Education. So I think this just makes it a little clearer.
Well, I know it's a little clearer by state regulation and law. The principal does have his powers of doing these.
Right, but what I think the compromise on that, on that bullet number 13 was around, serve on the sites or the schools, the principal's evaluation team.
I'm not sure, it just seems like it's just been moved.
No, I mean, I think it's a fine compromise. I have no, nowhere will towards it.
Mr. Coogan, force still yours.
I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Coogan. Any further discussion? Mr. Martins?
I'm concerned about the number 13, as was indicated here, serve as a primary evaluator for paraprofessionals. The paraprofessional should be working hand-in-glove with the classroom teacher, and that there should be a very close relationship between the two, so that the paraprofessional knows what's next, that the teacher's going to do in there, and then work with the students. To have someone else who comes in who's not there in that classroom just about every single day in there has no business in evaluating that paraprofessional. That paraprofessional should be evaluated by the teacher, who is indeed working with that paraprofessional, as and taking directions from that teacher in regards to, well, you work with Johnny Jones and Carol Smith and so forth, or that group over there in there, you know what we're gonna be doing, whether this paraprofessional is in math or English Language Arts or Science, wherever it is. But it should be working directly with that teacher. And with that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further discussion? Mr. Agia?
Just one brief on the other, the BCBA. If we could just get a report from Mr. Loesch and the Superintendent on the future of the behavior, the BCBA's, like the number of in the district, as well as what we're gonna currently do with the people we have in similar type of roles?
We're looking forward to coming back at the next Subcommittee meeting with more dialogue about this specific topic.
And my last comment is the special, number two certification, is a school adjustment counselor a special education licensure? Is that, so if we had a person who was a great candidate that had a master's degree, is it binding this to try and not get the best candidate by some of the language in that says a BCBA certification and/or a special ed licensure? This is, the school adjustment counselor count? For a BCBA, no. BCBA is a very specific certification granted by the state, and there's very specific coursework that's associated with it. It's much different than a path a social worker would take to receive their licensure. I get that, but where it says "and/or" special education licensure is what I'm saying. Yeah, ideally, we would love to have a BCBA with a teaching license, but there are very far and few in between. So I think that's ideally what we're looking for, and that's why it's "and/or." So you're basically looking for a BCBA certification more so than? For the most part, yes. The second part of it isn't the issue. Yep. Yeah, no, I agree. I think it's just important, but also, I'm looking forward to getting that other info. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Agia. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, Mr. Loesch, on that BCBA position, is that somebody who would assist all the behavior specialists in each of the schools with their behavior specialists? behavior specialists in each of the schools with our behavior specialists?
It would definitely be part of its capacity, yes. I mean, BCBA's is their training, is the scientific approach to behavior, so they would definitely be able to provide them with guidance and professional development.
Thank you, I yield.
Thank you. Any further discussion, discussion, excuse me. Motion was made, was amended by Mr. Aguirre and further amended with a second by Mr. Corey. On the motion, roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
So item two, I've been, I've been asked to ask the committee to table number two for a later date. I believe there's still some discussion going on between the administration and the South Coast Educational Collaborative. Is there a motion to table?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Aguirre, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. There's no discussion on a motion to table. Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Item number three is a discussion and vote to approve a membership of the Southeastern Massachusetts Educational Collaborative as referred by the Special Ed Alternative Ed Subcommittee and presented by Assistant Superintendent Michael Loesch. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Aguirre, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Discussion on a motion. Mr. Corey?
Yeah, I think that moving forward, this is all really good. Partnering up with the collaboratives is going to sharpen up our own internal practice. And I'm really pleased at the direction that you bring in special education, Mr. Loesch. Thank you very much. My question is, is in, sort of like down the bottom, it says, "Lastly, we were looking to partnering with one of the above collaboratives to create in-district day-level placements." So that's, that's a direction that sounds very exciting, so that we internalize those practices and sharpen it. So is there any kind of a timeline you're discussing on that? Is that going to be sooner or later?
We're definitely looking at that sooner. It really kind of benefits, most importantly, our students. And being able to educate them back in the city is our number one priority, because when we send students to different towns and cities, you know, they lose skills that they would normally develop in their hometown for they'd be able to develop, you know, transitional skills and be independent within the city.
Yeah, the social, the social skills alone, the enculturation process alone, the day-to-day enculturation is huge for them to feel a sense of comfort instead of being transported hours each way, you know, and having to disconnect with everything in their lives. So this is definitely a good move. How much do you envision it saving us in cost?
That can definitely fluctuate depending on the number of classrooms we develop, but I mean, it will be significant savings both in tuition and transportation. Right now, our transportation is quite high on really bringing our students to these collaboratives at their locations. And then when we're developing the classrooms in district, once we're members of the collaboratives, there's a discounted tuition at that point. And then there's also a significant discount per classroom that they start within the district that they pay us back through.
Yeah, just to give you a reference, I'll go back 20 years. We never even had a stone therapeutic school to the degree that we have today. And all of those were out of district placements as well. So the cost savings, you know, bringing it in district is just an amazing thing, but it also builds the capacity within our district at a cost savings and it sharpens our own skills. So it's a win-win. Thank you. With that, I yield.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Corey. Any further discussion on a motion? Here and on roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Item number four, keeping with the special ed department this evening, a request for needs-based site levels, special education paraprofessionals. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Aguirre, seconded by Mr. Coogan. Any discussion on a motion? I'll just say this, that at the special ed subcommittee meeting, you did a fantastic job outlining for the subcommittee the needs within your department. I thought you articulated well, both with the Walker report revealed as well as what your own observations have been of this department since you've taken over. So, subcommittee said, bring us your recommendations if you feel that they're necessary and we'll look to support them. And so it's happening tonight. So congratulations for your efforts to your team across the district who participated in the process with Walker, shared with them the needs we have in the district. Thank you for leading that department, identifying those and bringing those to our attention so that we can take the action we're taking here tonight. So, on the motion, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
At your desk, we brought this tonight because we continue to work on it up through today to get it tight and ready. We've identified, based on conversations through survey results with principals and department heads and speaking with other folks in the district as I do on a daily basis, we've identified five core areas that we're recommending to the school committee tonight to be established as budget priorities. The first is continue to invest in social, emotional learning supports and staffing to further develop our programming and supports for students and then provide more professional development for tier-two interventions. That's one of the areas that we have to improve on in order to keep referrals down and provide services. Within this frame, of course, is what we talked about earlier, Mr. Aguirre, which is around things like the services of psychiatrists, et cetera. This is an area that we all agree is a number one priority in the district right now and as such, we label it number one. The second is the continual investment instructional technology, both hardware and software upgrades necessary to support learning and teaching across the district. But this year, we're looking at this from a slightly different angle, that we're not just looking at purchasing equipment. What we're really looking at is making sure that we have the right integration support in each of our schools, particularly at the middle level. So this ties in with the grant that Ms. Carlson's applied for around infusion of more technology in classrooms. We wait to hear about that, but we know that it's materials and equipment, of course, but it's also, how do you use it? So those integration specialists are critical and we found this to be a priority that we've heard from all corners of the system. We're also looking at investing, of course, in academic direct supports to close the achievement gaps. So that's around core curricular resources, aligning the state standards with the curriculum materials that we have. We're looking at purchasing new curriculum to make sure that we're totally aligned. For example, the Reading Streets program that we have, it's not known in Massachusetts is one that's strongly aligned with the Massachusetts state standards. And that's one of the reasons why we see deficiencies in ELA achievement. So that's something that we need to take a hard look at as we continue to look at how do we close the gaps. Class size reduction is something that the school committee has believed in since the beginning. Again, space drives that, but we're looking at maybe moving a couple more spaces, cleaning out a couple areas, particularly at Lord and perhaps at CUS. So we're able to add a couple more classrooms to the district. One of the things that's missing here, and I forgot it, but there's a, there's a A, B, C, D, E, F. The F is also looking at four-year-olds. It's a full day for four-year-olds, continuing to expand what we're doing with early childhood. Looking at instructional paraprofessionals. Mr. Martins', legacy in this regard is one that we, that we don't disagree in. But we're also looking at using other funds to do instructional intervention with retirees after school and also during the day. So that is something that, that we want to look at bringing forward to the committee this year. Continue to expand success pathways, so that's our alternative ed, our CTE and our dual enrollment and college career pathways. And then increasing our academic partnerships with ANET. So as we continue to expand involvement with ANET around capacity, how many school sites we're able to fund with the coaching. The fourth goal that we've established as a priority was to continue to invest in English Language Learners and special education. So that includes the expansion and development of our services, which includes the two-way immersion program that we're looking to open at Viverse this coming school year that the team's been training and developing. And then also looking at very specific professional development for ESL and SPED as well as what we're doing in our inclusion classrooms. And then finally, continual priorities as to continue to invest in district-wide operations. So that means safety and security, that means ongoing preventative maintenance, that means getting right the student transportation and the long-term contracts in place, and then continuing with our capital improvements. These are the areas that when, 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 when we develop a budget and bring forward this proposal to the school committee with your blessing, these are the areas that, that I'll be prioritizing in the next year budget. Tonight is a first read, it's not a final vote, so this is the first time I share with you this, so I'm open to any questions, comments, concerns, additions, but then I'm also open to that during the next month before the next meeting. So at the next meeting, we finalize the priorities and then continue the process. At the same time concurrent, I'm also doing a survey with parents. It hasn't gone out yet, but it will go out before the holiday, asking parents about priorities because that is in line with the new Student Opportunity Act, which requires that we get input and feedback not only from parents, but also from our unions and other community groups as we continue to develop priorities for the investment of, of school or state and federal dollars for schools. So with that, I bring this forward to you and very proud of the level of detail Kevin did a great job really combing this down. Want to thank all the principals and department heads for their continued talk. I want to thank Rebecca Cusick, who I meet with bi-weekly, who, you know, who's not shy or scared to ever say, this is what we need in schools and that ties in with what we have here. And George Ackley, the same thing from the FRA. So with that, I'll stand by for any questions or comments.
Motion to approve the first read?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Corey. Any comments, discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Upstayed.
Number six is a discussion and vote to approve the approval of digital advertisement for the athletic department as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee, presented by our athletic director, Mr. Boston. Good evening, Mr. Boston, welcome.
Good evening.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hetzel, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Discussion, questions?
Isle one.
Mr. Corey?
I feel like bustin' loose. That's it, my man. Right on.
Thank you. Mr. Aguirre?
I can't duplicate that, but I do have a question. So I do think that this, we talked about this at the subcommittee. I'm not opposed to the increase of the digital advertisements. I do think that we need to have further discussion as a body with the superintendent related to where the money goes, whether we have the banners as well, and look at any policies, procedures, and how did we get to this point of whether it's in-house or out-house. I don't want to have that debate tonight, but I do want to ask the superintendent to come back to us next month after doing some more research so that we can all get on the same page relative to this. I also do know that basketball season is around the corner and this is the time to use the new scoreboard to raise some funds for that. I know we don't have the details on the advertising, but I would like to ask the superintendent to report back to us on what that's going to look like for the current year and if there is anything related to the banners, like if people already had those, maybe we could use those for one, you know, at least partially so that if anybody did pay, they can get some bang for their buck, per se. But I do approve it and I look forward to having that discussion over the next month so we can all get on the same page with this. With that, I yield.
Thank you, Mr. Aguirre. Any discussion? Mr. Boston, would you like to add anything?
Um, no.
I'd caution you.
Very, yeah. Very thankful.
But no, the floor's yours if you'd like.
Yeah, no, the, the Derfie Hilltopper Athletic Foundation, they were looking to get away from the banner program and when they had the opportunity to, the scoreboard, to get the scorer's table, one of the features of the scorer's table was an advertising program. So they saw that as a way to not do the banner program and go to the advertising on the digital side of it. So that's, that's what they were looking to do.
Thank you. Thank you for being here this evening. Motion's been made by Mr. Hetzel, seconded by Mr. Corey. Roll, Mr. Aguirre?
Can we just confirm what the motion is?
Motion's to transition from the traditional banner program to the digital advertisement. It's not changing any policy that was already enacted other than we're changing the modality. Instead of the banners, they'll now transition those banners into digital.
Right. The only thing, the only reason why I'm asking is on the agenda, it calls for approval of digital advertising for the athletic department. So I personally would vote for that. I don't think that spells anything related to a banner program or any other program and that's what I would hope that we could wait for the following month when the superintendent gets us more information. So I think the motion was just made to approve what was listed on the agenda. Is that accurate?
Which is the digital advertisement for the athletic department, which was, Mr. Boston just explained.
Yep, I just support that. So that's all, as long as that's what we're supporting. Doesn't say anything about the other program. Thank you, I yield.
Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hudson?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mr. Boston.
Thank you very much.
Item number seven is a discussion and vote to approve the renewal of the lease for the Forward Youth Soccer Association. It's motion made by Mr. Coogan. Before we do that, well, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Aguirre. Just so the committees, just so the committees are aware, in your packet, there's a, an agreement for a three-year, excuse me, a five-year. There's also a, another handout that was given to us this evening, which is for a three-year. So I just need to clarify for the maker of the motion, Mr. Coogan and Mr. Aguirre, was the intention for the three or five? And just so the committees are aware, if the committee does adopt the five-year, that then it, there's a further step in the process that needs to go to the city council for a five-year agreement, so.
I was looking at the one that says three years that we were given.
So let me just ask, and certainly, the motion's made then for three years by Mr. Coogan, seconded by Mr. Aguirre. Mr. Pacheco, would you like to, is there any additional information you'd like to share with the committee this evening?
The only thing, and for those who are on the FNO committee, the subcommittee, heard the group, at the amount of investment that they plan on, on, on making at, at the Soviet School in the vicinity of, over, over a three-year period, it's a hundred and, you know, $20,000, not counting the landscaping that they're looking to do on a permanent basis. So with that kind of investment, I initially put in your packet a five-year so that they would be able to capitalize on their investment over five years as opposed to three. The, but again, there is one more step. If we go with the five-year, that it would need to go to city council for a five-year contract approval. Either way, they would be using the field. It's not going to interrupt them in any way, shape or form. In, in my opinion, that recommendation is the one that I would make, the five-year. The three-year, you can do here tonight and they will not come back, we will not have to come back to another group.
Any discussion? Mr. Aguirre?
So I appreciate the, the comments and also want to thank the youth soccer for the work that they're doing and volunteering to offer to fix the field and it's, and it's old. So I do appreciate that and I think the three-year, whatever we have to do that we can do currently here as a school board, I think makes more sense. If we did get a year and a half in and it looks great and everything's going great, I would personally make a motion that we increase it for another three years at a different time so that we can continue to let them understand that we're partners in this and that we're not going to pull the rug out from underneath them. that we're not going to pull the rug out from underneath them. But I do think we need to get this approved without any further steps, so that they can get to work with their contractors and all that. And I do appreciate your support and your assistance with that process, and I think it'll work out for everyone. Thank you, I yield.
Any further discussion? Thank you, Mr. Pacico. Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler?
Abstain.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Motion carries. Number eight is the discussion and vote to approve to negotiate with Trembley Bus Company for the purposes of a five-year special ed education in and out of district, transportation vans, as referred by the Facilities and Operations Subcommittee and presented by Mr. Pacico. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Made by Ms. Aguirre, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Hutzler. Any discussion on a motion? Roll call. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Martins?
I'm concerned, I know that with specialized transportation, you can just go out and do it, but this is looking for five years going down the road?
This is five years, yes.
Right. I, in there, I have, although I'm not going to be around for it, but still, it's the issue of fairness for everybody with regards to all of the bus vendors that supply services to us, that at that point, whether it's buses or whether it's vans, and I think that there should be a going up for bid process, requests for proposals in there, so that everyone is treated fairly because of the length of time that is being indicated here. So, and as much as it's, I'm going to abstain though, because of the fact this is going down the line in there, but I just wanted to make my views known.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Mr. Pacico, if you can just share with the committee, during the last round of bids that went out for this particular service, there was one vendor that bid on it. Other vendors who traditionally do services with us did not bid. It was one vendor, which was Trembley. My understanding was they also were extremely reasonable in their five-year proposal that they gave to us, that ultimately was not signed by Mayor Carrera and his team in government center, which we eventually ended up switching and making it a one-year contract. But if there's any additional information, if you can just share, I do understand my colleague's concern about fairness and going out for bids, but if you can just share briefly your process, your understanding in this process.
So the first part of it would be to remove the McKenney-Vento piece from that particular contract. So currently, that contract was through an IFB process and bid out as a regular 30B procurement, and it was done with McKenney-Vento built into the van-only contract. We're removing the McKenney-Vento piece because that must be bid 30B. It is not exempt. So what's left in that contract is strictly vans, no buses whatsoever, no yellow buses, that's, will be bid out separately. There was no other bidder for this particular piece in the one-year contract, nor was there any other bidder in the five-year. So we did not have any bidders that bid on this work previous, previously, the other two IFBs that we put out. So the intent, or my request, is that I'd like to sit down with the contractor and basically, when that is removed, what that contract looks like, looking back at the last two bidding proposals, and see where we stand. If that proposal is a good proposal, I would like to bring it before this body, and if this body was to approve it, then that would be one piece that would be put aside, a five-year contract that was settled. If it is not approved, then it would go out to a full IFB procurement. There wouldn't be any other negotiations taken with any other companies. It would be just with this company, since they are the holder of the current contract, and they are the ones that have been doing this work, as it's been for this full year.
Mr. Martins?
I understand what you're stating, but Mr. Pacico, whether these, and I don't, I have nothing to gain or to lose in regards to this, just the fairness involved in here, whether it's all vans, all buses, a combination, whatever you want on there, that's the proposal on there, for all vans in there. And if Company A can provide the service, bid on it. If Company A cannot provide the service or does not wish to provide the service, don't bid on it. Plain and simple. And at least they have the opportunity in which to bid if they so desire. And so nobody can turn around and cry foul over the fact that, wait a minute, you're having private discussion, I don't know what was said, or what was agreed, or what was modified, and to make it work for that particular, and I've known Trembley Bus for a long, long time, and I've known Dave Trembley for a long, long time, but nevertheless, you know, that aside, it's just the fairness of, for all of the vendors involved in there. And it's, well, then it becomes up to you as to write it out, what is it that you exactly want in there, and then let that go out for bid.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Motion's been made by Mr. Aguirre, seconded by Mr. Hutzler. On the motion, roll call, please.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler? Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yep.
Mr. Martin?
Abstain.
Item number nine is a discussion and vote to approve the year-to-date budget report. It's presented by Ms. Almeida, is there a motion?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Corey. Any discussion on a motion? Ms. Aguirre?
Just a request, and I want to say that we've spoken about this in the past, to add some things on here, but what I would like to request is that on every monthly binder, that we get the chart, basically like the equality chart that we talk about, the one that looks something like this. If we can get that updated, because we've been doing a lot of hiring, and, you know, some schools aren't, we added a council here and there, so to see, if we can get on the monthly report this updated, and tweak, I think it's a great report for us to see equality across the district. So the only question I had on the one with the healthcare, the amount that, we're taking all the new positions into consideration, I think I asked you this before when we look at the projections.
Yes.
And it's too early to know what that looks like, correct?
Yes, it is.
But you're taking it into consider, as we added like seven pairs today, you got it covered as far as that goes.
I do, yes.
With that, I yield, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aguirre. Any further discussion on the motion? Roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
For the committee's information, there are appointments, there are retirements and notices of death. Is there a motion to accept and place on file?
So moved.
Made by Mr. Hutzler, is there a second? Seconded by Mr. Coogan. All is in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So voted. What I'd like to do is to, item number nine is any new business, any topics for discussion that could not reasonably be anticipated by the Chair 48 hours prior to the meeting. Does any member have any new business? Hearing none. Superintendent?
Yes, I have.
Do you have any new business?
I have one new item under the Master General Law, under the issue of security devices, item number four, under the ability to have executive session.
Are you asking that be a matter that's discussed in executive session?
Yes.
Is there a motion to refer Superintendent's request?
So moved.
To executive session? If I can just ask, as the Chair, just for the public certification, is this something, Mr. Superintendent, that you were not aware of within 48 hours of tonight's meeting?
Correct.
Thank you. Motion's been made, is there a second? Was there a second?
Second.
Made by Mr., who made the motion, please?
Mr. Aguirre?
Mr. Aguirre made the motion, seconded by Mr. Corey. Roll call on that motion.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
May I correct?
Is there any other business before the committee this evening? Is there a request for executive session this evening, Attorney Assad?
Yes, there would be.
Could you please state for the record what the reason would be?
Sure. First would be Master General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to review and approve executive session committee minutes for the November 18, 2019 regular meeting of the Forest School Committee. Next would be Master General Law's Chapter 38, Section 21A4, to discuss the deployment of security personnel or devices or strategies with respect thereto. We will reconvene, there may or may not be statements at that time.
Motion's been made, roll call.
Mr. Aguirre?
Yes.
Mr. Coogan?
Yes.
Mr. Hutzler?
Yes.
Mr. Corey?
Let's go.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
May I correct?
Committee will stand at recess for executive session.[1702.91]